Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, July 23rd, 2003. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardinals, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierogosa, White, Zine, Padilla, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, we do have three brief presentations scheduled for today. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Council members Perry and Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm joined here at this moment with Councilmember Tom Labange, and we are expecting to be joined momentarily by Councilmember Bernard Parks. This is a special day today, and we have some special guests who are here all the way from Senegal, and they are here to meet with the Los Angeles Senegalese community, and are being introduced to us today by Professor Alan F. Roberts from the UCLA Department of World Arts and Culture. Professor Roberts is a co-curator of a major exhibit of Maured arts funded by the National Endowment for the Humanities, and recently commended by Governor Gray Davis, the museum -- I'm sorry, excuse me -- called "A Saint in the City: Sufi Arts of Urban Senegal." This exhibit is currently on view at the UCLA Fowler Museum of Cultural History through July 27th. This community has a rich history that is highlighted by Amadou Bambawas, a Senegalese Sufi that is a mystical Muslim saint from around whom the Maured Way has been created. There are some five million Maureds in Senegal, and most of the four to five hundred Senegalese people living here in the greater Los Angeles area are Maureds. This African Muslim movement is based upon Bamba's lessons of pacifism, dignity, tolerance, the sanctity of hard work, and to care for one's family. Sheikh Amadou Bamba was a poet, teacher, and a pacifist who held that the only struggle he would pursue would be with the imperfections of his own soul. Sheikh Amadou Bamba held that tolerance for all religions and all nationalities is the essence of God's will. Maured followers of Sheikh Amadou Bamba, living in America's inner cities, are transforming them through diligence and hard work, and are recognized by city councils, mayor's offices, in many of our major cities such as New York, Chicago, and Cincinnati, where annual Sheikh Amadou Bamba Days are already being held. Many individuals work in or around our city, and in particular in the Ninth Council District, in the Fashion District, particularly in the Santi area area. We are honored to have Sheikh Mortala Mbake, one of the only two surviving children of Sheikh Amadou Bamba, here with us today. He has demonstrated the deep values and priorities of his father's teachings by founding more than 400 schools and charitable institutions around the world. A show of welcome and appreciation is in order, and it is my honor to present this resolution to Mr. Mortala Mbake in recognition of the First Sheikh Amadou Bamba Day, in honor and in remembrance of a great spiritual leader who has taught love, peace, and acceptance of all people. And I'll make that presentation in just a minute, and allow Mr. Labange a chance to speak, and then hopefully Councilman Parks will be here by then.
No, Councilman Perry, I just wanted to stand with you and these great men from a long way away, and one woman who's here to welcome you. Very special for us in the city of Los Angeles to have you here in our chamber. This is the People's Chamber, the People's City Council. People walk in the doors here to let their government know what they want, and then from time to time, we have distinguished groups like you here. So it's special, and I wanted to join with Jan Perry in an announcement of this day. And let's all give them a great hand of welcome to Los Angeles.
And Professor Roberts, why don't you join us as well?
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words before I make the presentation?
Sure. Maybe Omar can say something.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Good morning. To City Council members, to Jan Perry and Mayor of Los Angeles, James Hahn, on behalf of Sir Imam Murtalab Mbake, it is my honor and privilege to accept this proclamation day honoring our Sheikh, Ahmad Bamba. The people of Senegal, and particularly the Maured community in Los Angeles, thank you for your support and recognition. Sheikh Ahmad Bamba's teaching was peace, hard work, respect, and family. We strive to reflect this teaching in our daily life. Dear Councilperson James Hahn, we have the support of the Senegalese community living in Los Angeles and living in your area, and believe me, we're not gonna deserve you. Thank you for everything, and thank for your support, and God bless.
Thank you. And I'll make the presentation. I'll make the presentation. You take your visitor pass off for the pictures. Oh, great. Bernard.
I just wanted to add my belated voice to the Sikh and tell him that we really appreciate what he has done, not only in his country but worldwide as it relates to peace. Certainly, we know in the city of Los Angeles, there's times in our weekends and weekdays that we wish we could declare peace in our communities. He is viewed as a worldwide leader in this area. We appreciate him being here. I don't think we could do any more than provide a resolution, but ask him to continue to provide the guidance and leadership he has done throughout the world, and to convince those in each nation that peace is the only way to resolve our issues. Even though we are, as a country, at war on at least two fronts, we still hold out that peace is the way that we're going to coexist in this world, in our local communities, in our international communities. And I just want to say thank you for being here. We're pleased to honor you. We're pleased that you chose to come to the City Council while you're visiting this city, and we look forward to you visiting in the future. Thank you.
Thank you to Ms. Perry, Mr. Labange, Mr. Parks.
On behalf of the Sheikh, Sheikh Salih Mbake, to my father, Sheikh Mortalab Mbake, I thank you and salute everyone of you. We are very happy to be present here today, and to honor our Sheikh Ahmad Bamba, because his teaching was only peace and work for humanity, and everything, you know, be the well-being for the community of all the world. The tragedy he put in the earth, it was seven years, seven months, seven days, and seven hours. All these days, these years, these hours, all this work was peace, peace, hard work, and everybody gonna be happy where he is. And we are very happy for today, and we're not gonna regret the proclamation today, because you recognize the work of Sheikh Ahmad Bamba and his teaching around the world. teaching people how to make peace and respect everybody, white, black, yellow, red, and now every million, every people around the world, we have a million people, everybody knows his job was peace, and to put Islam and everything around the world, and everybody gonna live around way, live way, and a nice work to do. And we thank you very much, and God bless everybody, and we are happy for here today. And only one reflection, because this is the son of Sheikh Mortalab Mbake, the baby face of the Sheikh Ahmad Bamba, the grandson of Sheikh Ahmad Bamba.
Thank you again for that special presentation. Members, we have two other special presentations today, and at this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Ludlow.
Colleagues, very seldom do we get an opportunity to acknowledge an individual who has lived to be the great age of 106 years of age, and it is a great honor for me to bring forward not only a longtime Angelino, but a longtime resident of the Tenth Council District, Anna Ms. Matthews, it's Ms. Matthews, it’s such a pleasure to have you here this morning, and I’d like to just share with my colleagues and people throughout the city a little bit about your great background. Ms. Matthews was born July 10th, 1897, in Columbus, Ohio, to John and Queenie Moore, married Herman Hauser, with whom she had two daughters, Ruth, who is here with us. Ruth, good to see you. You’re looking great. And Pauline, who is no longer with us. She raised her family in Detroit, Michigan, and lived there for 70 years. She worked in personnel for the Jewish Community Center of Detroit for 20 years. She relocated to Los Angeles in 1991 at the very young age of 94, to be closer to her devoted and dedicated daughter, Mrs. Ruth Moore, and her late husband, Dr. Frazier Moore. They have lived in Lafayette Square community of the Tenth Council District for 40 years. Some of her great awards during her lifetime have included being crowned Queen of the Los Angeles Federation of Senior Clubs 100 Years Plateau. She earned that distinction on November 4th, 2000, and Honoree of the Centenarian Award 90+ Club, November 13th, 2001. I’ve been told that Ms. Matthews attributes her longevity and health to her faith in God. She is known for her keen sense of humor. She loves to read and keeps up with current events. Her family says she is a joy to be around, and I would like to introduce also with us her family, who has joined us, her daughter Ruth Moore, who’s behind me in the beautiful green, loving granddaughter, Mrs. Brenda Richards, her great-grandson, Frazier Moore III, and friend and caretaker, Maria Jones, her great-niece, Mrs. Melanie Jefferson, behind me, and her great-great-niece, who’s also been working for Mayor Hahn, Shannon Jefferson and Doris Fryerson. Let’s give a real warm Los Angeles welcome to Anna Matthews. Now, Ms. Matthews, I understand this is your first time ever being in the City Council chambers, and so we would very much like you to say a word or two and share with us your wisdom for how we can all live to be 106 years of age.
The only way that I know is just to trust God and do the right thing by everybody, and I appreciate everything today that you’ve done for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. And on behalf of all of the council members who are here, and Council President Padilla, we’d like to present you with this certificate, this resolution acknowledging 106 great years. Keep on truckin’.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That’s so nice.
Members, we have one more presentation today, and at this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Ed Reyes.
Good morning, Joe. Good morning, councilmembers. Madam President, members of the council, as you already know, the Los Angeles to Pasadena goal line will be officially opening this weekend. As we go through this week leading up to the grand opening, we are going to be seeing a lot of ceremonies and a lot of celebrating, and rightfully so. And come Saturday, when all the grand honorees, elected officials, special guests, et cetera, are going to be receiving accolades, there are going to be a group of people who are not going to be up there on the stage, but probably should be and deserve to be there. Members of the council, on July 25th, Joseph A. Kennedy, who is a senior transportation engineer, will be retiring from the city of Los Angeles after 35 years of service. I just wanted to share with you a little bit about Joe, because he’s one of those unsung heroes that prefers to stay behind the scenes. We had a hard time getting him here. As a registered professional engineer in California, and as a civil engineer and a traffic engineer, Joe Kennedy has been a key member of the Department of Transportation Management Team for quite some time. He was born in Independence, Kansas, a true Central American, but he was raised in New York, and to this day remains a diehard Yankee fan, and we like him anyway. As a matter of fact, I’m sure we had a Dodger fan, and they made us correct it, shows you what a Yankee fan he really is. He graduated from Clarkson College with a Bachelor of Science and degree in Civil Engineering in 1968, and began his city career in July 1968 with Department of Traffic as a traffic engineer assistant in the Central District Office. He was a U.S. Army captain and head instructor, where he became Chief of Roads, Airfields, and Drainage at the U.S. Army Engineer School in Fort Belvoir?
Belvoir.
Virginia. I said that right. After he was honorably discharged in December 1971, he returned to the city, where he was assigned to the Signal Design Division. In August 1977, he transferred to transportation planning, where he developed procedures for evaluating and prioritizing transit routes using passenger delay information. These procedures were later adopted by the Urban Transit Administration, AMTA, which is now known as the Federal Transit Administration, FTA. During his career, Joe has prepared and analyzed transportation system management studies. He has created a new section called Preferential Parking Section, something I know Tom Laban likes. He had prepared reports and studies used by the city for the proposed metro rail projects, Blue and Red Lines. He has managed rail transit design development and construction traffic management. During his tenure, he was prominently involved in the design and construction of the Metro Blue Line, Green Line, Red Line, and of course, the Goal Line. Members of the council, the benefits of the Goal Line are such that we’re going to be showing and demonstrating that the city, through the Goal Line Authority and cooperation of Pasadena and South Pasadena, that we can build a project on time and on budget. And a lot of that has to do with the hard work Joe Kennedy and the crew, the Department of Transportation, has demonstrated. They were there at 4:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, all hours of the day, we had issues. I was telling them once that we couldn’t get the cars out of Marvin Way soon enough because we were all congested, we were striping the lines, and a couple of days later, he goes, “Well, I was there between this hour and that hour, and this is what’s going on,” and he broke it down, and we saw relief. So when we talk about what their view is and how they work, these are truly the unsung heroes. So I talk about the people who should be sharing the stage with us come this Saturday. I am talking about the people who did the work. I’m talking about people like Joe Kennedy. The fact that he’s retiring on the actual day of the opening of the Goal Line seems very fitting. It’s been a long time coming, the Goal Line, that is, but it’s finally going to happen in large part because of people like Joe Kennedy. So I wanted to thank him publicly and let him know that I appreciate everything he has done for us. So without further ado, it gives me a great pleasure to provide this certificate, and congratulations to Joe Kennedy for his illustrious career, his hard dedication, his great work, and I want to thank his family, his wife, and kids who weren’t here today, but I understand they’ll be here for the luncheon tomorrow. Great. And you’ll be able to see on your desk, I’ve provided a soda pop bottle, actually it’s a cider, and has a commemoration of the Goal Line opening, provided by Galcos, who has been here. We’ve honored him for his work in preserving our historic Highland Park, and he provided this for us. It says, “Opening 2003 Alley to Pasadena Metro Goal Line,” and Joe, the mic is yours. Thank you very much.
I do thank you for this certificate. I do appreciate it. My 35 years working for the city and for transportation, I’ve found to be both rewarding and enjoyable. I think it’s fortunate that I’ve been able to work for DOT. It’s allowed me to be involved with a wide range of programs and projects. The last 12 years, as you said, have been spent on various metro rail projects and MetroLink, with the combination being the Goal Line. I think it’s probably gonna lead the way as one of the safest light rail systems in the country because of the things we’ve been able to do. I’ve found that the staff that we’ve worked with on this project, both from the elected offices from DOT, and some of those folks are here this morning, and also the other city agencies such as engineering and Con Ed, street lighting, police, fire, street services, have been very dedicated to the project and very supportive. I think once I’m gone, I think back to what has occurred in the city and my career, there’s gonna be these people and the friendships that we’ll remember most. Again, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to share a few words?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments from the heart for Joe Kennedy. I’ve had the pleasure of working here and for the city of Los Angeles for a little over a year, and every week, I look forward to those things that make me so happy that I get a chance to do. But for almost the entire time, there’s one week that I’ve really dreaded. It’s the week that Joe Kennedy would be leaving the city of Los Angeles and Department of Transportation. And I say that because there is nobody that you’re gonna find more professional working for the city of Los Angeles than Joe Kennedy. You’re gonna find nobody who’s a nicer person. In fact, Joe Kennedy has a reputation that I was reminded of on the way over here this morning, and that he is, he will never say anything bad about an organization, he’ll never say anything bad about a person. But you have to look very carefully at Joe because his body language will tell you in part what he’s really thinking. And what I see today is somebody who feels very good about an illustrious career of 35 years, and I see somebody who is looking forward to a very well-deserved retirement. From the bottom of our hearts in the Department of Transportation, Joe, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I believe that concludes the presentations for today’s meeting. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Ludlow seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Parks seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to be continued. On item number three, the applicant consents to a continuance to September 17th.
Members, request to continue item number three to September 17th. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item three is continued.
Councilmember Parks requests to continue item number six to Friday, July 25th.
Members, request to continue item number six for two days to this Friday, also without objection.
And one of the closed session items, item 56, the city attorney is requesting to continue that item to Tuesday, July 29th.
Colleagues, request to continue item 56 to next Tuesday, without objections, so ordered. Next item.
Items one and two on the regular agenda are items noted for public hearing.
And I do have cards on item number one. Let’s call that item special. On item number two, I do not have request from members of the public to address the council. We shall therefore deem the public hearings open and closed. Are there members wishing to call item number two special? Item number two now before us, any requests to call this item special? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item number two. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Items four through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item number four, the Fire Department has submitted its recommendations relative to the 10 property owners identified by council at the July 15th meeting, and that report has been distributed to all members.
Members, items four through 15 now before us, public hearing have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, and seeing no such motion, request for any specials, items four through 15. Items four through 15, any specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Items 16 through 53 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, members, items 16 through 53. I do have cards on item number 50. Let’s call this item special, and unless there’s an objection, items 47, 48, 49, and 50 are similar in terms of subject matter, so we’ll call all four items special and consider them together. Any other specials, items 16 through 53. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Item 42, it’s a substitute motion, technical and change, technical in nature.
Has that been circulated?
It’s been circulated. We can call it special, or we can move on now, whatever.
We’ll consider without objection item 42, substitute motion that has been distributed. Any other specials? Mr. Weiss?
That all of the items relating to the street fares, which I think are 47 through 50, are called special. I don’t.
That has been announced. We’re calling all four items special, Mr. Weiss, and considering them together as they are related in subject matter. Ms. Sikowski.
This is special event motion in the 11th district, and I just wanted to add the amount not to exceed $764. The amount wasn’t in there, so that’s the street closure special event.
Then we’ll consider item 33 as amended as well. Any other specials? Seeing none, and seeing no request from members of the public to speak on these items. Ms. Perry?
I just want to call item 52 special.
52?
Yes.
Okay. Item 52 called special by Ms. Perry. On the balance of the items, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, including item 33 as amended in the substitute motion on item 42. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Zine, did you wish to be recognized? Okay, we’re almost there. Forthwith on item 31, please.
Items 54 through 58 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold these on the desk?
Let’s hold all closed session matters on the desk.
Item 59 is an item for which public hearing has been held. A joint public hearing was held in the Economic Development and Employment and Housing and Community Development Committees. The joint report has been distributed to all members.
Okay. Colleagues, item 59 now before us, public hearing has been held. Members wishing to call this item special? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item 59. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved.
On the continuation agenda, item 60 is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
And Mr. Zine, you wish to call item 60 special? 60 called special by Mr. Zine. Next item, please.
That would take us back to the item called special, item one.
Item one now before us. We do have public comment on this item and a good number of speaker cards submitted. Let’s try to limit public comment to about 15 minutes. If I can ask the following individuals. Mr. Laban?
Yeah, Mr. President, just for an introduction, we have someone who’s a great public employee who’s visiting us today. She’s a representative of the city attorney’s office. She’s all the way down from Sacramento, a former deputy mayor under Richard Riordan. Sandra Strezak, please welcome her. She worked for the city attorney’s office in Sacramento. Give her a welcome home, and on behalf of the mayor of the city, I got a pin for you, Sandra.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Turning now to public comment on item number one from today’s agenda, the council calls forward Michael Lewis, followed by Vernon Zimmerman, Alexis Krasulovski, Herb Finley, and Stephen Slan. If I can ask you to form a line behind the podium, please. Mr. Lewis.
Yes, this is relation to a brush clearance, an appeal for the fees for brush clearance for 2001. The substance of my points are in the letter that I sent to the city council. I trust that you have that.
Yes, it has been circulated.
Basically, when we got the brush clearance notice, it was properly mailed to us. We called to request an extension. I was working two jobs, one of them for the nonprofit organization Cal Start, which has helped the city with a number of projects. I was all, I had also started a new business in the business incubator that they started. But I called to ask for an extension of time. I was told by the Fire Department that not to worry, that we would receive at least two more letters before we had to be concerned with the city clearing the lot, and those letters never arrived. Nine months later, we got a bill from the city for the work, and when we called to find out what had happened to the other letters, they had mailed the other two letters to our old address, even though we had properly changed our address on the city’s records. So they told us we’d get the letters, they didn’t send them to the right address. Also, in the letter, it spells out- Also, in the letter, it spells out that we have, we were denied of the opportunity to see if the work was even done or if it was done to city code. I have pictures that show, pictures that I took at my earliest opportunity that appeared to show that the work was, if it was done at all, which we dispute, it was certainly not done to city standards. And I have those pictures with me today. The red tag, it's, we, as you see from the letter, we don't believe that was posted. We have a neighbor across the street that monitors the property. We never were informed.
Thank you.
It's my request today that they, that this matter be concluded today by either waiving or reducing the fee down to the two hundred and eighteen dollar non-compliance. It's a hardship for me to be at these hearings.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vernon Zimmerman, and again, if I can ask the following individuals to form a line behind the podium, following Mr. Zimmerman will be Alexis Krasulovski, Herb Finley, Stephen Slan, and Tony Clock. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm a resident of Los Angeles and a taxpayer and property owner for the past thirty years. I live in Council District Four. I'm appearing here today because I was treated unfairly by the Fire Department Brush Control Unit and by the subsequent appeals hearing by the Board of Fire Commissioners. The basis of my appeal is that the Brush Control Unit does not follow its own rules. During my Fire Department appeals hearing, I presented a long list of brush controls digression from their rules. That's important because their bending of their own rules led to my being issued a huge bill from the city hired Brush Control Crew. At the conclusion of my appeals hearing, the Brush Control Inspector who ordered the city hired crew stated that Brush Control does not follow its own rules. I don't think this is ethical or fair, and I think you'll agree with me. I believe that on that basis alone, I should have been granted my appeal and exonerated. No such luck. The bottom line is, why is this important? Because I am now being held responsible for paying the city hired Brush Control Crew's bill. Brush Control is charging me almost five thousand dollars for a job that normally costs me three to five hundred dollars. That's ten times as much as normal, which is grossly unfair and way out of line. I have documented my protest in extensive detail. I have filed my detailed documentation with the city clerk and the Board of Fire Commissioners. In the meantime, I urge you not to rubber stamp this five thousand dollar assessment against me until you have further reviewed the facts.
If I may ask you to conclude, please?
Okay. Brush Control's own admission that they did not and do not follow their own rules should not relieve them of their responsibility. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide photos to support my side of the issues to any council member who is interested.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alexis Krasulovski. Alexis Krasulovski, please come forward. And if I can ask once again, the following individuals to please form a line behind the podium, that will help us expedite the public hearing. Herb Finley will follow, as well as Stephen Slan, Tony Clock, and Carl Sadler.
Uh, is it my turn?
Go ahead.
All right. Distinguished council persons, I am Professor Krasulovski. I teach at Cal State Northridge on the tenant at sixteen oh seven Landus Street, and my landlord, Herb Finley, and I would like to make four very brief points substantiated by additional evidence in the form of two thousand and one checkbook and photographs, et cetera, which I have in my hands. We have copies of our four points, which we would like to distribute to each of you, please. Okay. Could each of the council persons get one of those?
Yeah, copies are going to be circulated, ma'am. Copies will be circulated.
Should I continue?
Please continue.
Before they get that in their hands? All right. Clearance was made at sixteen oh seven Landus Street at Echo Park by Gonzalez Alaman on June second, two thousand and one, not just in two thousand and two. This was within the fifteen days as specified in the May twenty-first, two thousand and one notice, which we received. Clearance has been made every year, sometimes more than once a year, by my gardener, Gonzalez Alaman, ever since I moved into sixteen oh seven Landus Street in Echo Park over ten years ago. Our question is, why if the Fire Department came in May, on May twenty-first, two thousand and one, and we cleared the property on June second, two thousand and one, within fifteen days, why did they wait until September to inspect instead of returning fifteen days later as their own notice specified? Furthermore, point number three on the papers that we are trying to hand out to you right now, the going rate for brush clearance is, we believe, in the two hundred to five hundred dollar range, not fifteen hundred to two thousand one hundred dollars. I've been paying Gonzalez Alaman in the two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollar range, and that has included trimming trees, cutting bushes down, making sure things are six feet away from the property, and we have photographs to substantiate that. My fourth and final point is that while the Fire Department's two thousand and three brochure on brush clearance clearly states that the owner is responsible for year-round clearance, we are not aware of any two thousand to two thousand and one mailings or other written notification of this rule. My landlord, Herb Finley, has another point that he would like to add to this proceeding, please.
I forgot.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, my name's Herb Finley. I counsel people. I'm the landlord. She's been there for ten, over ten years. She's been taking care of it.
Into the microphone, please, sir.
Alexis has been a tenant of mine for over ten years, and she's been taking care of it every year, using the same gardener she had been using for years before. I've got a little technical question about the size of a lot because it's on the side of a hill that the city apparently approved, taken out a bunch of dirt behind it, so it's literally on a cliff now. And the last forty or fifty feet of the property is probably owned by the city or whoever's next door. But we've been clearing it and not knowing that we're supposed to take care of everything. And of course, the price is very, very high. I've had two of their estimates by private gardeners, none was over three hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephen Slan and Mr. Stein will be followed by Tony Clock, Carl Sadler, Wolfgang Kettenberg, and Sarkis Kachidurian.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Good morning, President, council members. I own two lots within two miles of each other, one on Nichols Canyon Road since nineteen ninety and one on Mulholland Drive since nineteen eighty-six. I've cleared both lots as usual when I receive the first notice, and I use my gardener, who clears the lots every year. Since nineteen ninety-four, he's been doing the work, and I have his bills here that show his work done. Some years I get completion notices and some years I don't. The program has been very inconsistent with getting me notices, even though I have telephoned and requested inspections and left requests on their voicemail. When I had my appeal meeting a little while ago, they informed me that there was a new requirement on how much I had to clear on the property. So that year, two thousand and one, I had the lot cleared. I had both lots cleared. I got a completion notice on one. I didn't get it on the other one, and I just assumed that everything was fine because it was done as it has always been done. I did not get a second notice that I did not pass, and I did not have any chance to even know that I had to correct the problem because I had done the work as I'd done in all the previous years. A year and a half later, I received a letter from the Fire Department that I owed them thirty-five hundred dollars. It's now four thousand dollars. It usually costs me three hundred and fifty dollars to clear the lot. It's five hundred dollars to clear both lots, and I just think that this amount is just completely outrageous and completely unfair.
Thank you, sir. May I ask you to conclude, please?
Yes. I believe that if the Fire Department is going to send a notice that could result in a four thousand dollar fine, then I think it should be served by certified mail or some method that proves that I received these notices. I have all the documentation of all the different approvals I've received through all the years for both lots, and I have performed in every year, and I request that the city council either reject this fee or reduce the fee to something that is more appropriate for the work that they said that they had to do.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Tony Clock, followed by Carl Sadler and Wolfgang Kettenberg.
Good morning, everybody. I would love to circulate these pictures.
I'd like to ask you to distribute copies, and sir, if you would please speak into the microphone?
I unfortunately did not receive the notices because my address was changed, and all of the Fire Department should have known my new address. The notices and all the bills and everything went to my old address. I own these lots for the last twenty-five years, and numerous times, the fire inspectors made mistakes calling me for non-compliance, and I had to go out there and point out where my property markers are. After that, I was always released from my accusation. This time, I could not respond because I did not receive the notices. I do have a property marker, and that's the only way you can really know where the property lines are, that you go by the property markers. To make sure, I re-surveyed my properties, and I have now on these pictures, you can show, see where those property lines are. The Fire Department in the hearing did not show me the before, after, and during pictures. They even refused to give me a copy of the contractor's pictures, who also had the before, during, and after pictures done, which even would additionally support my theory. If you look at these pictures, you will see that the brush clearance was definitely done on the other side of my property. Therefore, I should be released from all the charges. Additionally, I have the three identical parcels adjacent to each other. For two parcels, they would recommend to waive the non-compliance fee and the, but other fees, but they would charge me for the fire clearance on the third property, which was under the same circumstances. Still didn't get anything. They would not release me from even that one. I do, with all respect, hope that the council will see that the property line, where the property line is, that the brush clearance was done on the other side, and I would urge, if any doubt is about this, to send somebody out with me to the site where I could point out where the brush clearance was.
Thank you, sir.
Through these pictures, because the topography and the house behind and the telephone post and everything clearly shows where the brush clearance was done, and the picture shows that it was before, during, and after.
Okay.
There can be no question about where the property line is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Carl Sadler, and he will be followed by Wolfgang Kettenberg, Sarkis Kachidurian, Susie Holloway, and Ronald Wesson.
Yeah, I hear from Mr. Kettenberg. I cleared the lot for him in two thousand and one. In fact, we made it extra clear because he was putting the property on the market, and there was more effort made than any other year, and it was perfectly clear, and he gets a notice much later that it wasn't. Okay, Mr. Kettenberg.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Give it to him. I own that piece of property on Mulholland for twenty-five years. I've been cleaning up for twenty-five years. I get a clearance notice for twenty-five years. I had a clearance notice in two thousand and one, which I don't have. I didn't keep it, and my neighbor complained, and something was hitting his fence, so I called the Fire Department. They said, just clear that fence up. Even so, we were cleared, and I did. And then I get a bill for two hundred and eighteen dollars, and I said, what's this all about at all? Two thousand and one was starting with new ordinance, and the Fire Department is changing, and on and on. So just send us a letter, and it was a woman I called, and send us a letter that you're disputing the two hundred and eighteen dollars, and which I mailed, and like I said, for twenty-five years, I have always been cleared. And in two thousand and one, in fact, a real estate person said, why don't you clean up some, which I didn't have to, some trees off there to make that lot look bigger, which we did. We hired a big international truck from Hugh Randle in Venice, and there was some, there's a big oak tree, and there's some green under there, and the fire captain, when I went in Venice, said, oh, that green got to go. So I went down to the Fire Department on Mulholland, and they said, no, leave that green under there. That gets watered from the neighbor. Don't cut that down. I said, okay, but in Venice, they want me to cut it down. No, don't cut it down. That's just ground, ground cover, and just please leave it there. So the lot, like I just have, I have a notice here that they inspected it, and I'm cleared with that, even in two thousand and three. That's every year like that.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Kachidurian.
Yes, good morning, honorable council members. I cleared my lot in two thousand and one, and I still received an assessment for thirteen hundred and thirty-two dollars. So I asked for a hearing with the hearing examiner, and at the hearing, the inspector was there, and there was an issue about the depth of the lot. It's a very shallow lot. It's only forty-five feet deep at an angle, sixty percent slope, and I asked him at this angle, what would be the horizontal distance? He said he does not know. He needs to consult his charts. So I said, fine, why don't you do that? And the assumption was, he's going to get back to me, or I'll be contacted. I wasn't. I was just assessed this fee. Also, at the hearing, I asked if, is there a necessity to do a topographic and boundary survey to determine what the boundary line was, and verbally, the hearing examiner said that would not be necessary, and, but I was still assessed a fee, and I don't believe I should be. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susie Holloway, followed by Ronald Wesson, Chenny Garetto, and Ashad Shemillion.
Good morning. I'm Susie Holloway. My husband is Ronald Wesson, so he's been going to the fire hearings, and I want him to talk first, please. We're talking about the same lot on Andalusia.
Good morning, councilmen. I had mailed in a package to Councilman Ludlow with pictures and an explanation and a description of what has happened for the last two years. Also, I mailed in a package, complete package, with pictures to the Fire Department. What has happened with these lots is that we have two lots side by side, and we was noticed, we gave, we was given a notice of non-compliance, and what, in this case, we've given a notice of non-compliance for the wrong lots. When I went to the hearing on June the tenth in Venice, I met with Inspector Foss out there, and right away, when he showed me the picture, it had a landmark of a black rock. That rock was placed there by my gardener. Immediately after seeing this landmark, I explained to the inspector that the land that he was saying that I was in non-compliance of was not my property. He had another fire inspector with him, and he began to ask me, hey, I have had the land surveyed, and he would not accept the answers that, when I bought the land, that the guy that I bought the land from, as well as my broker, both had taken me to the property and showed me exactly where my property was. Also, the only markings on this property, on the properties up on this area, is on my property, no other property but my property. The Fire Department told me that they needed markings up near the road so that they would be able to see the markings, that they didn't have time to go down on the hill and look for markings. So to make a long story short, I had my land surveyed, and the property on top of the hill is owned by the city. As well as clearing, as well as clearing my own lots, I've been clearing the city lots for the last ten years. And the way, it's a paved road up there, which is Avenue thirty-seven. Andalusia, where my property sit, is on a paper road. I have submitted a package. It has the land surveyor's report, and it shows that I've been on the right property and that I've been clearing my land for the last ten years.
Sir, if I may ask you to conclude, please?
Yes, sir. I'm going to conclude it by reading my summary letter of what I'm proposing. I'm requesting that all fines and fees be rescinded at once, that I be compensated for all costs to validate my claims, that the city of Lud, or Ludus... all costs to validate my claims, that the city of Los Angeles reimbursed me for cleaning their own lots for the last 10 years. I have faithfully cleaned them. Turnabout is fair play. That the city allows me to continue to clean the lots for a reasonable, the lots, their lots, for a reasonable fee to later be determined because this will allow the fire department to better be able to locate my lots if the lots above me are clean. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ronald Wesson, followed by Chenny Garetto.
I am Ronald Wesson, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Our final speaker then is Chenny.
I'm a husband and wife.
Thank you, sir.
Chenny Garetto. I'd just like to say thank you for the council to hear me. And I just want, I hope the council will adopt the proposal recommended by the hearing examiner that stated the proposed assessment against your property has been disallowed. Fire department records are inconsistent with due process. Pictures show no posting copy of notice to abate a public nuisance. Other pictures are confusing and inconsistent and out of focus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. This concludes public comment on this item. Turning now to council discussion, Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. The fire department is here. I'd like to have them come forward. Members, this is similar to what we did last week. Last week, we were looking at the assessment for the year 2000 and had protests. Those protests, we confirmed the assessments where no protest existed and sent the fire department back to work those through. They did that and made some adjustments in those bills, confirmed some, and reduced others. Today, I would ask that we take the same steps. That is to confirm the assessments where there is no protest, as presented today to the council, not act on the ones where people submitted protest or dispute and ask that the fire department take those back, make sure that they get the cards, the names, and the fire department will meet on the side with everyone who was here, who protested, to make sure we get the name and specific parcel numbers. And ask that we continue those, that group of parcels, I think it's somewhere between 12 and 15 today that we heard for the year 2001, and ask the fire department to come back on those special ones to see whether adjustments should be made, whether the information that is provided today is new information that causes that adjustment to be made, and defer action on that for two weeks?
One week would be fine.
Okay, in one week. Then let's, that is my motion, to act, to confirm the assessments today where there is no protest, continue for one week those parcels where there is a protest, asking the fire department to meet again, look at and review the information to bring back recommendations next week on that smaller group of 12 to 15 issues where there were protests made today. So that is my act, motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Garcetti, seconds. Other members listening to be heard. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on Ms. Misakowski's motion. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, would be items 47, 48, 49, and 50.
Okay, before we get to that, Mr. Zine, did you recognize on something different around these items?
I have an item. I'd like to indulge the council to reconsider item number four. If they would please, I have a short clarification on that item.
A motion for reconsideration of item number four. Let's open the roll and reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, that is reconsidered back before us. Mr. Zine, let's call this special and return to this after dealing with the next item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Item number four is reconsidered and called special by Mr. Zine.
If we're going to hear four or an element of four again, let me ask the fire department to stay here because they were just about to walk out.
Please, thank you.
So we may want to resolve it anyway. So if the fire department needs to stay, Mr. Zine has just asked item four to be reconsidered.
Okay, we're now turning to items 47 through 50, which are similar in subject matter. Without objection, we'll consider these matters together. We do have one speaker card on item 50. Mr. Warren Williams.
Yes, to the council, my name is Warren Williams. I'm the coalition, Representative Coalition for Blacks' Best Interests. And the concern that we have is with these special permits and the requested insurance basically more considered and actually that events being set aside, special events be denied. It also relates to item 35 as an example within the agenda today. And the concern is that when a lot of persons within the community, grassroots nonprofit organizations seeking to do special events, those events should be more joined to recreation parks in the city that will waiver more of the fees. Currently, all requests for waivers are not even being granted. And then the additional burden of having to pay those fees in addition to insurance will cause a lot of positive events not to take place at all. So it's hard to understand why insurance is needed, but a lot of the events, insurance should already be in place through the city, so it should be covered. So our concern is, again, that we could maximize having positive events in the community to not overburden people that can't afford those fees. In addition to that, I would like to bring to the council's attention that I requested to speak on item six, I believe it, 12J. So after this item's closed off, I'd like to speak on 12J.
Thank you, sir. This concludes public comment on these items. Is there a discussion, colleagues, items 47 through 50? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. These items are linked together, I think, for a very specific reason. There's a great concern by many of us on what we're doing for special events for blocking roadways when special events occur within the city, whether it be a parade on Hollywood Boulevard, or a parade in San Pedro, or the traditional street fairs or farmers markets that take place throughout the city of Los Angeles. I noticed there's four motions on this arena. The request that I had was that the city of Los Angeles with the police department, Department of Transportation, explore the technology and the latest tools, the latest barricades, to enhance the public safety at these areas. And I noticed that in the city of Santa Monica where the tragedy occurred last week, there's now lawsuits that are occurring regarding the city not doing what some people believe should have been done to enhance public safety when a roadway is closed. So my concern, and I'm sure that of my colleagues, is that we have adequate protection, whether it be the K rails, or the barricades, or barriers, or something. And I know that using the little sawhorses, that's been used for many, many years, may not be the best device. There are other devices that have come out in the last few years. I know in the Hollywood Christmas Parade, they have plastic containers that they fill with water to keep the crowds back at the Bronson Hollywood Boulevard. And there's other types of new devices that have been adopted and used throughout the country to enhance public safety. The concern is, as we have our roadways closed to traffic for a variety of reasons, that we enhance the public safety and there's no misunderstanding of a motorist who's traveling down the road who may mistake and travel through, as we saw what happened in the city of Santa Monica. And we're going to hopefully learn from that tragedy. We won't have that occur. But there's many events throughout the city of Los Angeles on a daily basis, and I think there's some representatives from DOT who may have some information. I don't know if staff is here to address that. But I would ask if it's been explored, if it hasn't been explored, what we can do and what we can look at to enhance the public safety when we block streets to traffic, whether it's a street fair, a festival, or something where we're closing off a public roadway. I don't think the, I don't think we have adequate protection at this particular time with a little horseshoe and a couple of cones that we use to block off in the city of Los Angeles. And that was the motion that I addressed. And looking at the other motions addressing this area, I think the same general concern. Are we using the latest technology? Are we using the best devices to protect those people in that closed-off area so a tragedy does not occur? Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I appreciated the four motions that were introduced dealing with this. I certainly, that's the first thing I thought of after the tragedy in Santa Monica was, you know, like you said, whether it's a parade or another special event, we have a farmer's market in San Pedro where it's on a street. And the thinking is, even if that is appropriate, and maybe we look for better locations for farmers markets in a parking lot or a park or something as opposed to a street. But what I was thinking, since all the motions sort of called for different departments, I would like to ask that we form a working group with DOT, LAPD, Street Services, and any other department that has to do with special events, and have them develop a citywide policy on securing special events and report back to maybe a joint Public Works and Transportation Committee by August 15th. I just, public, well, you know, we can decide what departments, certainly public, you mean, report back to public safety, that's fine. But I think a working group with all the departments, there are so many departments that work on all of our special events, that I'd like to see them all get together and come back with a citywide policy.
Mr. Ludlow.
I want to just indicate, I think Councilmember Hahn has a good point. We all shared the same frustration, the same shock and horror as we saw this accident happen. And I want to commend my colleagues who have introduced motions that really look at the problem. I think there's been an unfortunate run by the media to begin to scapegoat older drivers. And I believe that we all are seeing through these motions that that's really not the issue here, whether it's an intoxicated driver, a car chase, somebody on a cell phone, somebody who has a seizure, blackouts. What happened here obviously will be studied for some time to come. But the point is that councilmembers Veragosa and Cardenas know at the state level, Caltrans requires large trucks to be parked in the off-ramp as state workers go to do construction on the off-ramps for just that issue. They don't want a semi-tractor trailer flying through some one-pound cones and pummeling the state workers who are up there working on the off-ramp. And so I think that we've got to look at the issue for what it is, is that pedestrians are being left vulnerable at many of these events from any type of incident that could happen. And so I think we should move quickly, as some of the motions are requesting. I know some are asking for 30 days, some 20, one, nine days. I think Councilmember Hahn's idea that maybe we form some type of an ad hoc committee of sorts that would begin to look at not only here in the city of LA, but let's look at what cities do throughout the nation. And then lastly, there is going to be, I believe, some shared responsibility. I know for a lot of block clubs and neighborhood associations throughout the city that hold festivals and events annually, unfortunately, this may require that there be some additional fees attached to including these barricades because it is going to be increased cost. There's almost no way around it. But we don't want to stop the cultural festivals that are happening throughout the city that really do make this a great city. And so I would rise in support of Councilmember Hahn's idea that we look at some kind of an ad hoc committee to begin looking at these special events. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering if we have any staff here at all, either from the CLA or from any of the other, DOT is here? If you guys could come forward, that would be great. Thanks. If you could just introduce yourselves for the record.
I'm in charge of special event traffic operations for the Department of Transportation.
Good morning. Why don't I first just begin by asking you to comment on what you've heard from Ms. Hahn and Mr. Ludlow and Mr. Zine in terms of telling us first, what is the current practice in the city of Los Angeles with regard to ensuring that when people use public streets for events, that safety is maintained? And secondly, what about this going-forward process of looking at the problem? You got the floor?
Okay. The problem is one that we've been concerned about for quite some time. We, as a city now, authorize approximately 2,500 special events a year citywide. That's up from 1,300 only four years ago. 2,500 translates into approximately seven per day, every day, all year long. We don't have the staff. We don't have the material to staff them properly.
Can I just, just, quick timeout, or quick parentheses. When you say 2,500 special events, are those 2,500 special events that use public streets?
Yes.
Tell me, and tell me what that means. Just define what use of a public street means.
That's everything from a block party through the marathon and the triathlon that close 25 to 30 miles of city streets.
So you're not including if someone is having a farmer's market in a parking lot when you count that?
No.
2,500 times a year, public streets are blocked off?
Some portion of the street is occupied, yes.
And what are the safety procedures, the spectrum of safety procedures that you have? And what are the ones that are typically employed?
Okay. For approximately 20% of those, roughly 450 events a year, we have engineers, registered traffic engineers, who prepare or review and approve traffic management plans. Those comply with state standards and the city's Work Area Traffic Control Handbook guidelines. So we have all the necessary devices in place on those and we ensure that they are. The other 80%, we don't have the material or the resources to do that. We put that on the event sponsors, but there is no staff to enforce that.
Give me an idea on, first, on the 20%, what you're talking about when you say you put some sort of safety devices into, into place? I mean, and just talk in terms I can understand. Are these concrete barriers? Are they just wooden sawhorses? What are we talking about?
In a lot of cases, I'll take an example, the marathon. We have.
You know what? Don't take the example of the marathon. Take the example of, because that's a unique, big deal. Take a garden, take a more typical example, something that happens more regularly.
Okay. Yeah. You want to talk about the farmer's market?
I could hold my time while they respond.
I'm Captain Susan Hicks. I do special events for the Department of Transportation.
Mike. Just, just pull the mic closer to you. Thank you.
As far as the Hollywood Farmer's Market, for instance, the only safety device they have for the participants in the Farmer's Market and for the people who want to buy the goods are the barricades, which are plastic. They're the kind that can be filled with sand, but usually aren't. Some of them are wooden, but that's all they have. They do not use the K rails, whether they be the plastic water-filled or whether they be the cement type.
Okay. I'm just trying to get an understanding then of this 20% that have some sort of barriers. Out of that 20%, how many of those are events where the barriers are substantial, such as concrete barriers?
I'd say approximately none.
None.
Okay. So we're talking about 100% of the 2,500 events in the city of Los Angeles every year where there is no physical protection between the traffic in the street and the people who are now using the streets?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. So this is, this is 2,500 lawsuits a year potentially waiting to happen?
That's our concern.
Correct.
Okay. So what do you suggest we do going forward to study this issue?
The task force is an excellent idea, that the issue is money. It's a question of whether we either come up with the funding to have, be able to provide those resources, whether we put it on the event sponsors, that they provide the resources by paying part of the cost of this, or whether we decide to control the number of events that are being authorized.
Okay, I understand a representative from the CLA's office, if not indeed the CLA is on his way here, because that raises a whole host of policy issues, I imagine, when it comes to the cost of certain special events. What can you tell us, and Mr. Miller, it'd be great if you could, what can you tell us about the sort of cost that one would be talking about? For example, concrete barriers for a farmer's market. How much does that cost? I mean, I don't, I don't, I've never costed out a farmer's market. Tell me what I should know if I'm starting a farmer's market.
Unfortunately, I'd have to check. I don't know offhand how much it would cost for K rail or concrete barriers. I mean, specifically, I don't have those numbers.
Mr. Willis, do you have any ideas on cost? What these things specifically cost?
I think the plastic K rail that you're talking about, wasn't it?
And just describe, when you're, have a seat, sir. Talk about plastic. Just describe what it is so people listening can have a full understanding.
Good morning. My name is Ali Madavi. I'm in charge of Special Event and Emergency Response for Department of Transportation. The K rail barricade, that the water barricade, sir?
Pull the mic to you. Thank you.
The water barricade costs approximately $500 per each six feet of it.
Water barricade, you said?
Water barricade. Water barricade.
That's okay.
Right. The concrete barricade is extremely difficult to use, even on major events such as Academy Award or other events that are high security, is very difficult to use. Often require a couple of days' advanced closure and a crane to bring the cement barricade. Therefore, we are using water K rail for most of the events, but we--
Plastic barriers that can be filled with water?
Yes.
What's the $500? Is that just to buy one, or is that the cost for each farmer's market would need to spend $500? I'm trying to understand.
$500 for each six feet.
To buy it, then you own it forever, then you could--
Right.
--use it every day.
Right.
Does the city have a sufficient quantity?
The city does not have any water K rail that we know of. We require the event sponsors, such as Academy, to rent it from traffic control companies.
Well, if I were watching on TV right now, I'd call my broker and buy stock in companies that make water-filled K rail barriers. Because if you look at what's going to happen in Santa Monica, there are going to be several lawsuits, and it sure looks like they might have a pretty good case. Now, you've just told us, Mr. Willis, that there are 2,500 special events annually in the City of Los Angeles, and that the city has, in your words, essentially no protection for people who are using the streets in those events to separate them from traffic. So the City of L.A. is on notice, it seems to me, and there may be a cost impact. I can only imagine what the cost impact would be if the city doesn't act and the city gets sued.
And just to clarify, that's no substantial protection. We have the barricades, and we do have traffic officers out there, but we don't have the substantial barricades like the K rail unless it's provided by the event sponsor.
Well, I guess I would just, I just, my final question would be, oh, Mr. Deaton, if you're here, you could take it instead of Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller is much larger.
What are the other issues with respect to special event costs that we should probably think about in connection with this issue? And how should we think about them, and what do you think we should do going forward, Mr. Deaton?
And Mr. Weiss, after this question, I'll ask you to press your button again.
Sure.
Well, yeah.
Oh, let him answer.
As you know, we've been working at this issue for a long time. The question is who pays and who doesn't pay, and how much they pay, and what we're trying to get a handle on is who are these organizations that are putting on the special events, big, small, nonprofit, the types of events? And we're trying to treat people equitably. I mean, recall, for example, that First Amendment events, whether it's a demonstration in your district at the federal building in West L.A. or at Prujing Square or whatever, we cannot charge them. So the question is one of equity. We're not charging an organization that perhaps represents something that you find vile. They have a right to go out there and hold their event, and we can't charge them. So those are the kinds of issues we're trying to work through.
And it varies from block parties to, as was mentioned, the marathon, which we have a contractual relationship with, situations with, in agreements with the arena in which there is a contractual arrangement that if we charge one place, that we could charge them, but if we don't charge in other places, we can't charge them. And the, resolving the equity issues are very difficult. For example, and I was listening, you're talking about barricades in the Light Festival in Griffith Park, we ran at the cost of around $10,000 for the event, the, all along there to protect the pedestrians from the cars that are going through, looking at the Light Festival, and that cost us on an annual basis $10,000. We had thought about, and continue to think about, but can't, haven't been able to get enough money, is to get the water ones so you could use them from year to year, but we haven't, that is a capital investment that we haven't been able to make so far.
It seems to me that this issue, which is going to be--
Last question.
If I could just finish, that is going to be studied by the task force, hopefully that Ms. Han suggested, we need to wrap into that the work that your office has already done in terms of special events and fee waivers, and at least have that inform our analysis here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the suggestion. I think the best suggestion that's been made so far, with all due respect, is what Janice Han talked about, is we need to get down to the bottom of what can we do, what should we do? The first thing that came to mind to me is there's major expenses here, and well worth it. But the problem is where are we going to get the money? Because when you talk about the expenses, there's two expenses, and if anybody knows anything about budgeting, there is one-time expenses, which is purchasing barriers and infrastructure of equipment, and then there's the ongoing expenses of the personnel and the actual activity, day-to-day, week-to-week, year-to-year, to be able to use these proper materials in order to protect the public. But the thing that's in the back of my mind the whole time is that we need to do something. It is just unfortunate that this tragedy occurred. And we, I mean, it's my understanding that a child as young as seven months lost their life on this tragedy. Can we prevent it? Hopefully, we can. Should it ever happen again? Should it never happen? But the problem is this, what are we, as a city, going to do about it? I think the issue is very real, that there's a liability issue here. And then once, once people sue the City of Santa Monica, once it starts to be known that there are best practices policies that any community can adopt, then all of a sudden, in my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but the liability goes through the roof. And then people can say, well, best practices were out there, all you needed to do is do a little research, all you needed to do is go around the corner and figure out what they were doing, and you could have done the same thing. I think Martin brought up a good point. There are other communities that are already using certain practices that, once again, they cost money, they cost resources, but they actually protect lives. So my point is this, I think we should develop a committee. I think it shouldn't be more than 30 days in time. The reason why I say 30 days and not nine days is because I think in order to use best practices, we need to go to Germany, we need to go to New York, we need to look at them, not physically go there, but we need to be able to look at what people are doing when they have been faced with these issues. And then try to figure out what the real solutions are, and then try to figure out what the best cost practices are, and then so we can actually embark on a roadmap on how the City of Los Angeles is going to protect the public in these venues. And it might come down to people having to share the cost. And I think this committee should have to do with people that have to do with Public Works, people that have to do with transportation, people that are involved in experts when it comes to police and fire, all those kinds of things. In addition to that, I don't think we should exclude the not-for-profits, because many times, they're probably going to be brought into the equation whenever we're actually talking about the public having to bear the cost on an event-by-event basis. So with that, I think this dialogue is healthy, and, you know, my heart and prayers go out to those families who were a part of this tragedy, but we should not sit here idly and let something like that happen here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Skousky.
In fact, Mr. Deaton, isn't the CLA working on a comprehensive report of street closures, and wasn't, isn't a report due? I think we had asked for it a budget cycle ago.
It's overdue.
Pardon me?
It is overdue.
It is overdue. Granted, the focus of it had been some of the issues that I think Mr. Weiss was asking about, which is what is the cost, what's the variation? In the past, I mean, members, we see, as we know, a lot of these motions come on our desk every day. I dare say that 80% of them are motions we are bringing in to waive the fees for special events in and through festivals, block parties, and bigger things. I think the reason that motion asking for a report from Mr. Deaton had been precipitated was the concern when we get some very, very big events, some very, very costly things, whether it's the marathon, whether it's the Kodak Theater, whether it's some televised event at one of the big venues in town. We often get a motion requested to waive all the special fees for those special events, which entail quite a lot more significant work by the Department of Transportation, police, et cetera. In any case, it was the financial concern and the attempt to adjust and look at the analysis of how much we're spending per year on special events that we don't give necessarily DOT any more money to handle, we just say, go and do it, waive the fees. So I think the idea of a task force, obviously now with the much more serious impetus of safety, we've done a lot of the work, we've done a lot of the background, so Mr. Deaton's overdue report, I think, could be prepared very, very quickly, then augmented by a task force of council members with the appropriate agencies. And it seems to me it's probably appropriate for Public Works to be the committee that this would go to and look at it overall. But look at it quickly, because we do have a new, serious threshold that I think we're going to have to address and find ways to do it, find ways to do it economically, or face the consequences of telling, and maybe we'll take a cutoff line, you know, the smaller $700, $1,500 events in a neighborhood might have a different category in terms of where they are. We might try to encourage them to be more in a school parking lot or some other area that is off-street to try to divert that cost and the potential impact. But we really need to address it very, very seriously, not only from the financial costs, but from the Bureau of Street Services, the Department of Transportation, and the Police Department. So all of those agencies need to be part of it, with the underpinning, looking all along of the impact that we might be having, while increasing the safety, also increasing the cost, and possibly eliminating or reducing the number of those special events that we regularly authorize and like to support.
Thank you very much, Ms. Skousky. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to comment on the issue of the barricades, is that we've dealt with that for so many years, and that the more onerous they are, the more difficult they are to move around. But one of the things that I've seen throughout, particularly in the beach areas, that they use these universal barricades that go in the ground, and you can pick them up in the street when they make vehicle-free areas, that you can use them all over the city. What you end up with is a hole in the street with a cap over it, and you come back and plug these in, and they provide that kind of security. But they're mobile in the sense of the streets, they can close down, and they use it for a variety of things, whether it's festivals or a variety of issues in the sense of making a vehicle-free area. The one thing, I think, and Tony mentioned, go to New York, I think you'd be disappointed, New York uses the age-old human barricade. They have so many police officers that they just put them across a intersection, and hundreds and hundreds of them, if you watch their parades on the television, you'll see that they're basically have wooden barricades and people. They do not have, they're not as advanced as we are. But I think the issue is, there's a lot of the smaller cities, beach cities, that use these temporary street closures, that they cap the, they bore the hole in the street, put a cap over it, and then they bring them and lock them down for a temporary use, and they use them all over the city. So, again, if you get too much more than that and become K rail, then you have the onerous task of bringing in trucks and moving that equipment, and it's really a gauge of determining what is the purpose? Are you trying to stop every car that comes through the barricade, or are you trying to give some moderate amount of protection to the crowd?
In that instance, you have the, you have to know which streets you're going to, in fact, have the events. In block parties, that's not going to be as easily determined.
But some of them are repetitive.
But some of them are repetitive, I agree.
Just like we have, and I think several years ago, we dedicated some of these 5- and 10K running sites to where they use the same site, and you don't have to remark them. But there are some that are annual block parties and street fairs, the Mert Park being one, several dozen a year. Somebody blocks 43rd, 43rd Place and Dagnan, that would, those are the kind of ideal places where we know that they congregate on an annual basis.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine, for a second time.
And for the last time, Mr. President, thank you. I'm looking at the agenda, today's agenda, and there's a number of special events, $2,000 on item number 15, 312 on number 35, 312 on item 36, 1,100 on item 37, and the winner today is $9,956 on item number 42. Who pays for that? What fund does that come out of? And the numbers vary. Does it come out of general fund, or is there a special pot of money that we use for these?
In essence, what happens is we are not reimbursed for costs that the Department of Transportation or the Police Department, et cetera, et cetera, depending on the event, expends for that effort.
So that comes out of their budget?
They are, yes.
For example?
But it's not a, they don't sign a check for it. In other words, it's, the fee is usually based on how many, how many hours of time and are we going to spend, the Department of Transportation, to go out and put the barricades or do whatever is required of the event. So they send people out, and the general fund is not reimbursed for that, for that effort.
So when they post the no-stopping on Saturday for a block party and leave the barricades there, and then the residents put up the barricades?
It varies. Some events, we loan the barricades to, and they put them up. In other instances, we put them up ourselves, the city does.
And the cost changes.
Well, when you have to go out, and depending on the, and also depending on the nature of the barricade, as Councilman Parks indicated, that if you're putting the K rails, they require a mechanical device to help carry them around and pick them off the truck and put them on.
And then when we had an event in this city, like the triathlon, the last couple years, and they were supposed to pay, and then after the event, we waived the fee. How often does it occur where someone's supposed to pay and they don't pay? Or later, we come in and say, well, we'll forget that. Because the triathlon's a very expensive event to put on, as far as city resources, from the beach to Aveira Street. That, I understand, we haven't received any money. How often does that happen?
Well, then, I don't know that the, if the fee isn't waived, I think--
The fee wasn't waived, but then after the event--
The triathlon's an unusual situation, an event trying to get started, et cetera, and I think it was waived because they, they didn't have the cash flow that they anticipated. But on the more, the smaller events, either the thing, either the fee is waived, or I believe they pay.
And that comes out of that specific department?
Right.
So the Police Department resources, the DOT resources?
Right. And even if they pay, the payment goes back to the general fund, and the department really doesn't see it directly, but they would, but if there was sufficient monies for those, they, then I think in the budget process would try to make the case that they needed additional personnel in order to comply with the, with the special events.
And if it's on a weekend, then the employees get overtime?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. The chair recognizes Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a question, as we're looking at this issue, what does the city do right now to protect city workers? If, for instance, there's a construction site? What are the significant difference, differences that are made in the protection of them on those work sites?
Well, as far as DOT staff goes, we put every engineer, basically in the department, through worksite traffic safety control training. We've done that for every single person. And we make sure that they're aware of what, how to set up, like a cone line, the proper signage to protect the area per standard.
But is there anything different in terms of the type of barricades that you find? So right now, city workers have the wooden barricades or the cones if they're going to be out on a sustained site?
Yes, yes.
And then I understand, obviously, in the, in the Police Department at times, and Councilmember Parks could speak to this probably better than any of us, but I frequently see that on what are going to be long-endured police standoffs or what have you, they'll actually physically put the police cars out there to block the streets. Does your department look at that at all? Do you study how the Police Department, what they do to protect a crime scene, or a crime scene that's in progress, or a site where city workers may be greatly exposed to a vehicle coming through?
Well, actually, that's one thing that we already do as standard practice that is better than what Santa Monica did. If we have traffic officers working a street closure, like a festival, street fair, or something like that, we typically have them park their vehicles, their parking enforcement vehicles, inside the barricade line. So you have the, the plastic barricades, but then you have the cars parked across the street, blocking access for any vehicle trying to run through the barricades. That's standard practice.
And it's, you just said it at the end, and your reason for doing that is because--
An extra level of protection with what material we do have available at our disposal.
And the fear of a car coming right through the barricades. Obviously, a two-pound cone couldn't stop a one-ton vehicle coming through.
I've already had two workers put in the hospital by cars. I don't want anymore.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Say, good morning again and good afternoon, coming up. Working group is coming together on this particular issue here?
That's, that's Ms. Han's motion.
That's on the floor. Okay, I like a working group on this, to look at these aspects, but I also, you know, and I'm, the poor people of Santa Monica and all that is a tragedy that is going to live with those people all the rest of their lives, those who are family members, and I feel on that. I also want us to make sure that we look at, if people drive and respect the law, when they-- they're doing, city workers, Martin, it's 25 mile-an-hour speed limit. Most people don't even do that. They go 40 miles an hour. They overexpect the law, so there's potential for the problem. You see, city engineers doing survey work, they're naked out in the middle of the street with nothing around them as they try to measure a street, in the middle of a street on this particular situation. When we have an event, Ms. Han, in my district, we have the Largemont Farmer's Market on Sundays, and they're on a parking lot off the street. They use a little of the sidewalk and area, and they do park their cars now, I went by Sunday morning, to prevent what would be a runaway, if I could call it that particular term. I think we got to look at those issues. But I think one thing in the movement to bring people back to the streets is to create these street fairs, to create these street activities. And that's what a city's all about, too, to, to be able to create that. We could create something that would make it impossible for anybody to do that. People do love a block party. People do love a block party in West Toluca Lake. They take barricades, plastic, put them out. Now, maybe they'll put the plastic barricades out, but then maybe we'll ask them to put one of their own cars there. Who knows if your working group will come up and find some concepts that will be able to do this here. But I wanted to make the point about lack of respect of people, aside from the tragedy of Santa Monica, of not slowing down when city workers are working and paving in the streets, when engineers are marking the streets. And then a giant thing is when our firefighters are answering an alarm, the public doesn't pull over for them, you know? And the accidents that happened from that particular situation, the lack of respect and awareness of drivers. Three things you could do about traffic, right? You know what they are, Ron Deaton? The three E's. You know what they are?
No.
Education, we've got to have more education for the public. Engineering, to come up with concepts, and enforcement, to make sure that it's safe. Those things are real key to the whole issue. Now, how we deal with the street situation, I think the working group is a, a concept, but I think it should be quick. But I also think we should have an ability to make sure that we do allow for things nearer or in the public area, because that's what makes people celebrate neighborhoods. Parades, we can stop parades?
No.
No, but we could do it safer, do it righter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I had initiated item 50, and that dealt with the issue of requirements of insurance with respect to special events. I, I too have a farmer's market on Central Avenue, and it's growing by leaps and bounds every week. But I have expressed concern and witnessed it myself with cars actually breaching the, the basic barricade and nearly missing vendors, stalls, things like that, just because people don't exactly know what they're doing sometimes or where they're going, and they get confused. And we're trying to improve the signage, of course, but I wanted to know in terms of the city and its own checklist or its risk management approach, what sort of process does the city go through to make sure that the insurance is adequate, not only for those sorts of activities, but for, you know, street festivals or block clubs or whatever, so we make sure that we have adequate insurance?
I'm not sure of the process. I need to investigate that.
Okay, that's something that I would like to have a report back on, because I...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
......
Thank you, Mr. V. Regosa.
Mr. V. Regosa?
I move the question, Madam Chair.
All right. We have the matter before us, which are the various motions with the amending suggestion by Ms. Han that Councilmember Padilla appointed a working group, a task force of the city agencies and council members to review these policies, and let's add that the CLA report be submitted as part of that, that is there, and then send it to committee. And I believe Public Works Committee would be the appropriate committee to deal with it. By, pardon me? By August 15th, they have this matter back with some information that...
The report from Mr. Deaton's always on the special event sheet.
That's what I suggested. Mr. Ludlow, do you have one added to that?
I understand that Caltrans has started, they have a, a working group that is looking at this issue. I'd like to make sure that Councilman Rahon would be agreeable to that, that we involve Caltrans, because they are doing a study as we speak on this.
I think that one of the motions asks for a review of all other agencies, both here, statewide, et cetera. So that is the recommendation, the matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. That is approved. We will have it back on August 15th with a report back. Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, do you wish to take up item four at this time?
Yes. Mr. Zine had asked for item four to be reconsidered. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Zine will be walking back in. I think, we're going to recognize Ms. Perry for an introduction.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I needed to have item 32 reconsidered, and an amending motion has been passed out, and I just have to have that reconsidered and voted on.
All right, that was item 32. I'm sorry, missed the number. Item 32, there's a request to reconsider that for an amending motion. Without objection, open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. That matter is approved. Ms. Perry?
This is an amended motion with some additional language on the vacation of a portion of a street. It's an internal street, it's not a controversy.
All right, we have the amended motion that has been passed out. Open the roll on the amendment. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. That matter is now approved. All right, we will now return to item four. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Madam President. On this item, I appreciate the reconsideration. There's a gentleman, Mr. Green, who's here, and I'd like to open the, reopen the public hearing for his issue. I've already spoken to the fire representatives, and they understand the issues and concerns here with the council indulgence, and I think we can clear this rather quickly. If we could hear from Mr. Green and...
All right, if there's no objection, we will open the public hearing to hear from Mr. Green. Mr. Green, would you like to come forward?
Excuse me, actually, there's, there's a, there's a technical difficulty here. It's Marcia Gonzalez Kimbrough with the City Attorney's Office advising the Fire Department. Mr. Green's property was not one of the 10 properties that was being considered today. His property was actually, the assessment on his property was actually confirmed last, on the 15th, last week. And so from a very technical standpoint, his matter is not before the council at all today. I would suggest that the appropriate action would be to, for Councilmember Zine to submit a motion to rescind the, the council's action from last July 15th as to this property, and to set the hearing next week, because it's not on the agenda today.
All right. If, I'm sure Mr. Zine will be happy to make that motion, but...
Can I make a verbal motion on that?
Yes, you can make a verbal motion that we rescind it, but since the matter is not before us today, I think the City Attorney's advising, we can't act on that motion. So make the motion today verbally, and then we will act on it when we can. But is there any objection to a hearing from Mr. Green at this point?
So we can hear from Mr. Green, so he doesn't have to come back again.
Right, so Mr. Green, why don't you, we've opened the issue on four, which we dealt with some other parcels, but you're under that consideration. We'll let you speak at this time.
Thank you.
Does Madam President want the motion to rescind be first?
I'd make that motion.
All right, Mr. Zine has made a verbal motion to rescind the action of July 15th on a specific parcel that Mr. Green has presented to then be sent back to the Fire Department for consideration, to look at the details and report back to us next week. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. All right. That has, action has occurred. Mr. Green, why don't you go ahead and address this?
Thank you. I sent a letter to the council on July 3rd. The letter is on file. I was out of town on the 15th. I request that to be reconsidered. I may pursue my appeal.
All right, I believe that Mr. Zine is going to move that the, your appeal be submitted to the Fire Department, have them deal with this, reconsider it, and bring a recommendation back to us next week.
Madam President, I can also add, discussing the letter, the form letter that goes out to property owners, it doesn't clearly state the obligation of the property owner to appear before council. The, the letter reads, "You're invited to attend a city council meeting," and it further states, "You may submit information in writing," and the Fire Department agrees that we need to clarify that, there's an obligation, and clarify being invited versus mandatory interpretation. So the Fire Department agrees that they need to clarify that language in the future, so people understand there's, there's a mandatory appearance before this body if they want to or follow the process.
All right, I think that's a good advisory, and let me just also ask the Fire Department on item one, if there were any letters submitted today that are similar to Mr. Green's, which dealt with last week and the year 2000 assessment, that we also have to make sure there weren't any letters submitted today where people weren't able to come, and that being included in another group of...
Those would be letters to the, to the city clerk.
Letters to the city clerk for the council hearing today. All right.
There was a record with the city clerk, Mr. Green's letter was confirmed, that it was received properly. So I will make the motion, you don't have to return, Mr. Green, and then we will take this up next week.
Right, but he may want to meet and discuss with the Fire Department.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Then that, yes, Mr. Smith?
Madam President, ask for reconsiderations, item 43 and 44, please.
All right, let us act on this item, which we haven't resolved. So Mr. Zine's motion has been to ask the Fire Department to come back on this next week. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. That is approved. Mr. Smith?
Now, like, ask for reconsiderations, item 43 and 44, please.
All right, we have had a request to reconsider items 43 and 44 from Mr. Smith. Open the roll on the request for reconsideration on those two items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. Those matters are before us.
I think, Madam President, both these items were reward issues. The CLA and City Attorney had technical issues on the wording, there are minor wording changes, nothing changed in the intent.
And has that technical language been submitted?
Yes, it's before.
All right, then the technical language, amending 43 and 44, consistent with our policy on reward motions, is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. Those are approved as amended. Next item?
Item 52 was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry on item 52?
Thank you very much. Just a verbal amendment to 52, asking that the Department of Risk Management supervise this project in place of the City Attorney's Office, and I understand that both departments have been contacted, and this is an acceptable arrangement to complete this project.
Ms. Perry? I'm sorry, was that, we said 52. 52 is a track of the recommendation.
Actually, item 50.
It's item 50.
Let me check on that, I think it's 52. Hold on a second. You've got 52 now as well. 52? Okay, you're right. You're right, sorry. My mind is state correct.
The discussion is on item 50. Which agency?
Yeah, so the substitute language would be to ask Risk Management to supervise the project in the City Attorney's.
All right, then that is the recommendation on item 50, which is one of the special event motions, and bringing Risk Management in as well. Without objection, that will be so amended. Next item? Oh, I'm sorry, 52 has been called special inadvertently, so that's a vote on item number 52. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. That is approved.
Item 60 called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, item 60.
Thank you, Madam President, colleagues. This issue concerns historical structure and the area of the western part of the city of Los Angeles, and the area of Leones, Adobe, and the Sagebrush Cantina, and the city of Calabasas, our neighbors to the west, for the second time in four years, and the third time since 1980. They're trying to annex Leones, Adobe, and the Sagebrush Cantina into their city away from the city of Los Angeles. This doesn't provide any benefit to the people of Los Angeles. Leones Adobe is a Los Angeles cultural landmark, and it's number one cultural landmark, has a long history with the city, the San Fernando Valley. One of the first ranch houses built in the valley, and Tom Labange knows this, early in the mid-1800s. It is the cultural landmark of the western San Fernando Valley. The city of Calabasas does not have the historical preservation ordinance for their community. And the Sagebrush Cantina is an important landmark. Many activities take place at that location, and recently Woodland Hills, Warner's Center neighborhood, the council fully supported and endorsed the cantina and renovation they're going through. And it's important that we act today on this matter, and on the record opposing the annexation prior to the city of Calabasas council meeting, which will take place this evening. They're considering the clarification of the environmental review schedule for tonight. Before them is a mitigated negative declaration, and given the importance of the historical landmark and the fact that public services and utilities are not adequately addressed in such an annexation, a full environmental impact report should be considered. And I've met with the representatives from the city of Calabasas in the last year, and we've had discussions, and I was quite surprised to see them moving forward on this annexation. So I would ask that the council forthwith approve the motion that I've submitted on this matter, and that we don't surrender the Leones, Adobe, and the Sagebrush Cantina to our neighbors to the west, the city of Calabasas, and we proceed with the assistance of the City Attorney to protect those parcels that are part of our great city and our great San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Madam President, and Mr. Zine, I rise to support you. It's interesting, I believe it's 1962 when we formed the Cultural Heritage Board that started, the commission which was started at the memory, and several of the particular first monuments on that first day of meeting, and Carl Denzel, I believe, was the chairman of the board at the time, and Leones, Adobe was selected number one. Not St. Viviana's Cathedral, not the Pico House, but St., but Leones, Adobe was selected cultural heritage number one. So we do not want to lose our number one historic monument. We also all remember, even in that short time from 1972, that's 10 years, 82, 92, now 40 years almost, that the city of Calabasas has grown, and God bless the city of Calabasas, and all that they do for the people of Calabasas, but this was, and is part of Los Angeles, and it should not be taken away, because you could go throughout our boundaries and say, well, over here, it should ease off here, but there were no freeways there. There was no demarcation, there was no neighborhood, but this Adobe was the number, the first one selected by the first preservation group in the city of Los Angeles, appointed by the mayor. So, Mr. Zine, I'm going to support you on this, because you're 1,000% right, and we could recognize the city of Calabasas. And I remember in my lifetime, in 28 years of, of here, and Sidney, you maybe too were there too, we used to play baseball, and we'd go to the Sagebrush Cantina, and there was nothing but the Leones, Adobe, and there was absolutely no Calabasas per se, at all. So you're shaking, you and you were at the same spot. They had good ribs and chicken. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Zine, for bringing this up. Are you going to be there tonight, Mr. Zine?
Where?
At the council meeting to fight for Los Angeles.
Oh, I'll be fighting.
Oh, good. Oh, you'll be fighting. Good job. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. The Chair recognizes Mr. Zine again.
And I just wanted to mention that the Sagebrush Cantina, when Wendy's young son, Thomas, grows up, will probably be hanging out there on his Harley-Davidson.
Sunday afternoon at the Sagebrush Cantina.
And I know that Councilman Miskowski had this in her district prior to the reorganization last July, and it is a real historical place, both the Sagebrush Cantina, Leones, Adobe. So I would ask that we do this forthwith, and my representative, Tom Henry, planning deputy, will be there tonight, and I plan to be there tonight to fight for the city of Los Angeles and keep our land and keep our facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. There is no one else wishing to speak. Open the roll on the motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That is approved, and it will be sent forthwith. Next item, Mr. Green?
Now it'd be time for comments from the public on non-genetic items. Now it'd be time for comments from the public on non-genue items.
This is now the public commentary, we did have one card submitted, let me call forward Mr. Warren Williams at this time.
To the council, before I speak on public comment, I do request again reconsideration on item 12J. I did submit a card on that item as well.
Public comment, please go ahead and address us.
Okay. On item 12J, and I was saying at the same time for my public comment, but on item 12J, it's mentioning about including the women's community to address poverty and homelessness as it relates to issues of domestic violence in the various committees. The concern is that what constantly happens is that this is biased and discriminatory, that is stating include women in this issue of domestic violence, and it makes the assumption that men cannot be victims of violence. It's an issue I raised before, that the restraining orders in this county are under the VAWA Act, which is the Violence Against Women Act, under the federal government, which is also biased and discriminatory. Ending poverty in California is very important, but we know that a lot of it has to do with the root causes of violence, which is the unfortunate situation a lot of African-American males face, which is loss of employment, arrests that should not be made in the first place, the failure of the police to properly investigate complaints, a lot of the unfortunate lack of finances within the community that creates certain conditions that actually promotes poverty and intergenerational, intergenerations of poverty. So I think it's very important that this item J will be changed to include men as well as women. Then the public comment item that I want to speak on has to do with, again, the renaming of Crenshaw, and some members of the community did speak at the Public Works Committee today on the renaming of Crenshaw, and we do not want to see that item die either in this council or in that committee, because the foundation of the problem that caused a lot of African-Americans still to suffer poverty and other conditions in this country like injustice and fairness, police brutality, false allegations as made, it stems from racism. And the best way of beginning for this county and this city to overcome a lot of racism is to help build the steam of our children and give more pride in the community by renaming the names of our streets under people that we can associate to and respect. Such names as Malcolm X and others are those names that the community are asking to be renamed. So we're asking at this council, that some council person, we've submitted to Martin Ludlow to do it for the 10th District, but we would like for some member of this council to make a motion that the issue of renaming Crenshaw will include other names besides just the name of Tom Bradley, as well as naming the Lemur Park Village Africa Town.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. That concludes the public commentary for today's council session.
Still on the desk are the closed session items.
All right, any other routine housekeeping items?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, July 25th, and August 12th, 13th, and 15th for city business, meets, motion is required.
Ms. Gruehl moves, Mr. Cardenas seconds. Ms. Hahn's excuses approved.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Tuesday, Wednesday, August 5th and 6th for personal business, meets policy, and Friday, August 15th to leave at noon for city business, also meets policy.
Mr. Zine is excused on those dates?
That does clear the desk, Madam President.
All right, if I can ask the members of the public who are here and staff who are not responsible for being in executive session to please now vacate the chambers so that we can go into executive session and discuss items with our attorney.
Mr. Clerk, matter before us, please.
On item 55, there's a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of $900,000 in the case of Reginald Simons versus City of Los Angeles.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item?
On item 57, there's a recommendation to approve a stipulated award of 85% permanent disability in the amount of $129,145 payable at $230 a week, plus life pension thereafter at $96.63 a week in the case of Arthur White versus City of Los Angeles.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item?
That does clear the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, are there any announcements today? Announcements? Mr. Garcetti?
No.
Ms. Gruehl?
Yes, Housing Committee, which was to start at 1:00, will have start in 10 minutes, so 1:40.
Other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have one announcement. In the 8th District, we're going to have a airport LAX Environmental Justice Meeting at 5:00 PM, Jesse Owens Park, at Century and Western. There'll be a couple of hours of discussion, the issues of the LAX expansion plan.
Okay. Announcements? Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. As I mentioned earlier, the Gold Line has weekend festivities, be free rides for everyone. There'll be events at each station, Union Station, Chinatown Station, Heritage Square Royal Station, the Historic Highland Park Station, all the way through Pasadena, we're going to have dancers, we'll have bands, we'll have the Alley Dodgers Batting Cage, and each station's going to have a series of events, and you're all invited, it's free for two days, and let's see how we can connect with this. I suggest you take public transportation to the stations because it'll be a hard time parking, so we know that upfront, but invite you all, and let's celebrate a great project that was done on time and on budget.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other announcements? Mr. Zine?
Two items. Mr. Reyes, I'd like to thank you for the Corona dressed up with the Gold Line label. Thank you very much for that. I think all our colleagues received this.
For the record, that's cider.
Commemorating the Gold, oh, it's cider. I thought it was a Corona.
It's a river water.
And I also want to, it's cider, okay, it looked like Corona. And I also want to acknowledge that last evening, Winnetka became the 75th Certified Neighborhood Council in the city of Los Angeles. Winnetka is the 75th, and the 3rd District now has every community neighborhood council certified, so we're following the lead of Councilmember Hahn. I know you had it earlier, but we now caught up with you. So neighborhood councils coming on board, 75, certified last night by the Board of Commissioners. So let's hear it for Winnetka. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Zine and the Winnetka community. Mr. LeBange?
Yeah, Councilman Parks, when you made your announcement, you reminded me, tonight at 6:00, at 6501 Fountain Avenue in Hollywood, at the Hollywood Municipal Building, there will be a briefing from the Department of Airports for neighborhood councils and associations in the 4th District area to learn the impacts of the master plan and what is proposed. Again, it's an opportunity for all of us to try to get the departments, and they willingly want to reach out to our constituents to share with them what their impacts and what their ideas are as they look at the long-range goals of the LAX, and Councilwoman Miss Akowski has encouraged all of us to do that so that our constituencies can become knowledgeable about what is proposed so they could all make the right decisions in the future. 6501 Fountain Avenue in Hollywood, right adjacent to, and anyone from the 13th or 4th or 5th or any district that's in Hollywood, 6501 Fountain Avenue in the general meeting room. Thank you.
Mr. LeBange, what's drive time between your meeting and Mr. Parks's meeting?
About 27 minutes if you go down Arlington, but you got to go slow, there's a curve down there.
We get people coming back and forth and sharing all those points of view. Any other announcements? Other announcements? Adjourning motions, please rise. Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much. I know that Council President Padilla mentioned the incident in New York, but I would ask colleagues that we adjourn in memory of one of our colleagues in New York, Councilmember James Davis, who died as a result of his gunshot wounds today in council chambers. He was born April 3rd, 1962, and represented the 35th District, which is in Brooklyn, it's a district, a lot of African-Americans, Caribbean-Americans, whites, Hasidic Jews, included Pratt Institute, St. Joseph's College, Long Island University, among other institutions. He was a New York City Corrections Officer after graduating from college in 1989, did two years at Rikers Island as a corrections officer, became a transit police officer in 1991, and then joined the New York Police Department in 1993. He founded a group called Stop the Violence in 1991. Ironically, he was somebody who lobbied Toys R Us to stop carrying look-alike guns after there were two shooting incidents of small children, one of which had been killed in New York City, and so he pushed successfully Toys R Us to stop carrying look-alike toy guns, and it's more than ironic, it's tragic that he lost his life at the hands of gun violence. The Stop the Violence group, which he worked with, worked with a lot of famous people, Vander Holyfield, Toys R Us, institutions to really help promote not only anti-gun violence, but he did a lot in trying to get MTV and other television stations to stop playing music videos that had violent lyrics or images during hours that children could see that. He was elected in November 2001, and so was not even through his first term in office. We wish him and his family nothing but our prayers and thoughts, and hope that he rests in peace, and know that the entire institution of the New York City, City Council has our sympathy and prayers as well.
All members. Other tributes? Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, request for adjourn in memory of Gregory Michael Molden, passed away July 11th, July 11th, 2003. Gregory Michael Molden was born April 2nd, 1959, at Langley Air Force Base in Virginia, to Gloria and Desvale Molden. Gregory started the California Highway Patrol Academy on August 19th, 1981, graduated in March 1982. In 1994, Gregory transferred to Inland Division of the California Highway Patrol, where he worked as a background officer, and successfully completed other duties, assigning him as CAHP Area Representative, Coordinator of the Annual Bakery of Vegas, Law Enforcement Run, and Annual Firework Stand Fundraiser. Gregory took the examination for California Highway Patrol Sergeant and successfully passed and promoted, May 31st, 2002, where he was assigned to the Baldwin Park Area Office until his untimely death. He was a motor supervisor with the California Highway Patrol. Gregory's finest attribute was his ability to be a good friend. He carried himself with a lot of pride and dignity, greatly admired, and will be greatly missed by everyone who knew him. He is survived by his parents, Desvale and Gloria, two brothers, Eric Molden, who's a member of the city family, Eric Molden works General Services Security, and his brother Stanley, his wife Regina, and his sister, April, his niece, Evan, special friend Tina Stewart, also his extended family, the California Highway Patrol, and a host of other relatives and endless friends. May Gregory Michael Molden rest in peace. And I have one more. Request for adjourn in memory of Florence Margaret Colette, passed away July 13th. Florence was born February 23rd, 1929, in Ontario, Canada, passed away on July 13th in Tarzana, California. Florence was a beloved mother, grandmother, sister, and selfless member of her community. Her love, kindness, and generosity will forever remain in the hearts of everyone who knew her. Florence was a registered nurse for over 50 years, was an active member of Rebecca Lodge, also active in the First Presbyterian Church in Encino. Florence was a strong woman, and she did a great job as a mother and grandmother. She was much loved by her family and friends, and also be greatly missed. Survived by four children, Jeff, Stephen, Kathy, and Karen, two grandchildren, Justin and Alex, her brother William, and two sisters, Norma and Dorothy. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.